Get started and I see. Thank you for telling me that.
That's okay.
Good morning, everybody. It's nice to see everybody's shining faces this morning. Megan, will you please call the roll?
Regent Adams.
President.
Regent Adongo.
Here.
Regent Bogust. Regent Brankus.
Here.
Regent Cologne.
Here.
Regent Goedam.
Here.
Regent Cruiser.
Present.
Regent Manydeeds.
Here.
Regent Nixon.
Here.
Regent Peterson.
Here.
Regent Prince.
Here.
Regent Rye.
Here.
Regent Salzwedel.
Here.
Regent Trainer.
Here.
Thank you. Regent Tyler.
Here.
Regent Underly.
Here.
Regent Walsh.
Here.
And Regent Weatherly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. Before we begin, are there any board members who wish to declare conflicts of interest with the items on today's agenda? Hearing none, let's proceed. Our first item today is to consider proposed revisions to university policies on campaigning in residence halls, which require board approval under Wisconsin Administrative Code. During the Education Committee's report at the last meeting, the Board voted to postpone consideration to this meeting to give everyone more time to understand the proposed changes. Opening the floor to discussion on the prior motion, I'll now call on Regent Weatherly.
Thank you, Regent President Bogust, and it's a pleasure to be, I think, the first one to call you Regent President Bogust. So, yeah.
Thank you, Regent Vice President.
I'm going to move to delay this. When we first delayed it, at least for me, I didn't realize that it was, we would have a meeting, I should have, two and a half weeks later, and we haven't had time to address everyone's questions. So I'm going to move to delay this.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, is there any discussion on this question? Yes.
If we delay this, then what's, do you have an idea of the plan of how you're going to inform the issues here?
We want to take time to really look at the issue. I think it's bigger than we thought because we need to go look at it and delve into the issues at hand because the policy from 1988 is a bit more complicated and we want to really have time to look at this and I don't know if Quinn wants to address any of the legal issues that we need to look at, but it'll take some time.
So I'm sure you saw this morning the email that came from a student who represents the district on the Madison City Council that's solely in the residence halls. Is that, is that one of the things we're going to address or get more information about?
Quinn, do you want to address that?
Yes, Regent Walsh. We'll take a look at that specific submission, some of the other issues that have been raised to date and bring that back to the Board.
Okay, so there'll be some briefing for the Board member. You have got this additional information, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion from anybody? Hey.
Yeah, sorry. My only request is when we do bring it back, you know, I obviously went through Education Committee, but understanding from the 13 campuses because it is a pretty significant change for some in language is what resources do they feel that they're going to need that they don't have today when it comes to, hate to use the word enforcement, but I guess it's enforcement or managing that policy is probably a better word. Because obviously, resources are different for all 13 of our campuses, but yet the rules are going to be the same. And just want to understand what the needs are so we can make sure that there's adequate resource allocation going into an election year where this is going to be used or enforced or whatever, whatever term you want to use there for the policy. So it'd be great when we bring it back to understand that we've really looked at the 13 campuses and assessed their individual needs as well.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. And when we do bring it back, I promise there'll be an in-depth discussion so we all understand what it is we're voting on, what we're going forward with. So, and Regent Prince.
Yes, thank you. This is similar to what Regent Rye just said. I know that it will come back to education. However, I think this is one of those that should rise out of education and really be a discussion at the Board level. I think it does encompass a number of items besides education, so there will be quite a bit of discussion on this.
Okay. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Regent President. Yeah, just one more comment here, Regent President. Yes, thank you. I think in addition to resources, probably a close look at process as well. So I suspect that'll, that'll occur just to ensure that processes at each campus were, you know, meet with their requirements and so on. So I think that'll probably be a piece of the discussion as well, I would imagine. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Regent Goedam. I mean, and these comments are showing why it's really necessary for us to really delve into this. There's a lot at hand, so we're going to take our time and get it right. So thank you. Any further discussion? Megan? Anything? No? Okay. Okay, so we're ready to vote? All in favor for the resolution, the motion on the table?
Aye.
Motion to delay, sorry.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Our next item is a request from UW Stout to approve updates to their faculty handbook. I'll ask UW Stout Chancellor Catherine Frank and Provost Glenda Lee Rodriguez to present.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the time to present today. Glenda Lee is also on, I believe. So the summary of this request is that this is really, this is a revised post tenure review policy, and we've revised it to align policy with practice, ensure that our policy and practice are in current alignment with the Regent policy, and communicate clear processes to faculty. We should note that this was unanimously, these revisions were unanimously approved by the Faculty Senate. We worked together to update this policy. And just so the Board is aware, there will be several upcoming revisions to our faculty handbook prior to the HLC visit, Higher Learning Commission visit to our campus in October of 2025. So this is the first of several revisions that will come forward. The timing of this particular piece is important because faculty processes for post tenure review start a year in advance and we want to make sure that the faculty are functioning according to the updated policy. So that is what is before you today, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
And Glenda Lee, I don't know if you wanted to say anything. I want to apologize if I pronounced your name wrong. Sorry, it's too early in the morning. So thank you for both being on.
Yeah, good morning. I do not have anything to add, but happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Before we discuss, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Four?
So move.
Second.
I'll second. Joe?
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions or discussions on Resolution Four?
Chancellor, I just, I must express a tinge of amazement that your faculty voted unanimously to do something. I mean, they're, they're a very deliberative and, you know, considerably intelligent group, and I just, I don't know quite how you achieved that, but congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Walsh. It was, it speaks to the relationship that we have built with Faculty Senate, and I give a lot of credit to Provost Rodriguez for that. She has done an exceptional job making sure that channels of communication are open with, with the Faculty Senate. And again, this is, this is going to be, this is a heavy lift. We have a charge before the Faculty Senate right now for a comprehensive revision to FASLA, the Faculty Handbook. And, and we are working together with them. Actually, we have a meeting on one of the chapters today, and you all will be seeing a lot of revisions to FASLA. So it is a joint effort and one that we believe is going to continue to improve processes as well as getting everybody on the same page regarding expectations as we move forward, and hopefully streamline the very large document a bit, but we'll see if that, that results from the process. All the process.
Yes, it is. And thank you, Provost Rodriguez. That was some amazing work.
Any further discussion? Okay. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you again, Chancellor Frank and Provost Rodriguez. Appreciate it. Okay, moving along, we're going to have an overview of the new Title IX 2024 regulations and approve of the Administrative Code scope statements. Our final item is to approve this related to Title IX changes. I'll now call on General Counsel Quinn Williams, Chief Compliance Officer Paige Smith, and Title IX Coordinator Danny Thompson.
All right, well, I will start. Good morning, Regent. Thank you, Regent President Bogust. As you mentioned, myself, Danny Thompson, and Quinn Williams are here today to talk with you about the Title IX regulatory changes and provide you with additional details and next steps regarding the August 1 implementation. As background, Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972 requires that all educational institutions that receive federal funds prohibit sex discrimination in their education programs and activities. Over the past year and a half, the U.S. Department of Education has engaged in rulemaking to further examine and clarify schools' responsibilities in responding appropriately to reports of sex discrimination, sexual harassment, sexual violence, intimate partner violence, and stalking involving faculty, staff, and students, as well as pregnant and parenting students. On April 19th of this year, the department released a final rule which goes into effect August 1 of 2024. In more practical terms, this regulation is about ensuring that students and employees are free from any form of sex discrimination in their educational and workplace environments. The new regulatory requirements will increase the responsibilities of our number of university officials and practitioners. Danny Thompson is here today to provide additional details specifically related to this additional work under the Title IX Coordinator responsibilities, reporting requirements, and training. I will now turn it over to Danny Thompson.
Thank you, Paige. If you could do the next slide, please. Thank you. So first, I wanted to talk an overview of what are some of the major changes to the Title IX regulations. They are quite expansive. I think, as I said in the previous meeting, we've gone from 37 words to over 1,500 pages. And so the changes are quite expansive. Includes the expanded definition of sex discrimination. It explicitly includes gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation. There are now expanded reporting obligations, expanded training obligations. Title IX now extends to off-campus incidents, and we have expanded our record-keeping obligations, which I will go over all of those as we go through this. So, next slide, please. So the big lift will come with our Title IX coordinators. There is one on every campus, and responsibilities will increase in activity due to, as I stated, the expansion of what is considered now a Title IX violation. Because it now explicitly includes sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, this will increase reports. Things that would have been reported before but maybe had gone to another entity on campus now explicitly fall under the Title IX Coordinator's job responsibilities. We have an expansion of reporting obligations and what has to be reported to the Title IX Coordinator. I think the big one is all employees are now, must report anything that falls under the expanded sex discrimination definitions. And all employees must give the contact information of the Title IX Coordinator to a student or employee if they disclose that they're pregnant or other related condition. This one is especially a big lift as that has never been required before, and that will require not only more time for the Title IX Coordinator as more students and employees will seek them out, but also we have to train every single employee that this is now an obligation that they have. We also have the expansion of jurisdiction to off-campus incidents. So this includes both on and off-campus incidents will now fall under the Title IX claim versus before, which would have been just a general sexual misconduct. And this isn't to say that we didn't address sexual misconduct off-campus. It just usually went to another entity on campus such as the Dean of Students or something similar. And this now will be under the total jurisdiction of Title IX and the Title IX Coordinator specifically. And all of this together will increase the number of Title IX cases due to these changes in reporting. The previous regulations required a formal written report. That was, that would be what is considered Title IX, but they now include less formal things such as both written and verbal reports. So hopefully this leads to more interest in going through investigations and seeking these resolutions. Next slide, please. In general, the role of the Title IX Coordinator will now change with these new obligations. Title IX coordinators now have to act both as a coordinator but also as an authority figure with duties for ensuring that all Title IX compliance is fulfilled. And this includes the increase in training requirements, the expansion of supportive measures and rights. The Title IX Coordinator is solely responsible for all supportive measures, which are now expanded and more detailed. And these are activities we've already been engaged in. I think we've always provided supportive measures. You know, students are the number one obligation or responsibility. But with increased reporting, that also increases the number of meetings and supportive measures that are offered by a single person, the Title IX Coordinator. They have to assess all grievances from students and employees. And the big one that the Department of Education has really put forth is that the Title IX Coordinator is now responsible for monitoring and addressing any and all barriers that are related to sex discrimination. Next slide, please. And I know this may seem really mundane, but publications are a part of Title IX regulations, and these activities will take time and expense to ensure compliance, such as updating and replacing all publications through campus. The number of printed policies, signs, and posters have to be changed out, and if you've ever walked into a classroom and seen a sign that probably should have been replaced five years ago, this is just one of the small things that we have to do. Updating all of the university websites and all sub-pages with new policies and procedures. This takes IT resources and employee time. And then the big lift for this is creating new printed material for pregnant and expected parents and other related conditions and getting them distributed across campus. This has not been done before and is now a requirement that we have to do. Next slide, please. The next big area of change is record-keeping. Next slide. So Title IX coordinators will see an increase in their work due to a few things. One, maintaining a list of practitioners. So all of their investigators, their decision-makers, their appeal officers, keeping that list, and then tracking the annual training of the practitioners. And we'll get into the specifics of the training in a little bit. But the other big one is maintaining records of training and training materials for public requests, and this happens, I think, more often than people realize. People want to know how the practitioners who do this work, how are they trained? Who's training them? What are they being trained on? And so we have to make sure that these are available for public requests and people can see this. Next slide, please. Maintaining a list of confidential employees, and this is new as the new regulations really have specific definitions of what a confidential employee is. It has been expanded, but this is specific to each campus and is maintained by the Title IX Coordinator. It has to be by name and then what their title is, and it has to be updated annually. This can't be something that we can do at a system level and say, oh, anybody with this title is a confidential employee. It has to be specific to that campus. So the Title IX Coordinator is responsible for maintaining that list and rolling those employees into training and auditing that their completion is done. And then the last thing that the Title IX coordinators do is publication of specific information annually. This has always been a requirement, but the new regulations are expanding on what should be provided, when, and who they should be provided to. Next slide. And then the last one is the training lift. Next slide. So one of the biggest lifts will be training. And the big one is all employees now have to be trained annually, and this was a surprising change in the regulations that it included all employees. None of us expected this to come. Basically, across the entire United States, people are now scrambling to train all of their employees. This was not something we had seen in the regulations before. So currently, right now, we do train all of our employees on sexual harassment and some Title IX things every three years. This now has to be trained to an annual, has to be changed to an annual schedule. And then all new employees have to be trained within 30 days of their start date. Next slide. And then beyond that, there's extra training based upon your role. So again, confidential employees, because they have different reporting obligations, they have to also be trained, and they have to be trained annually. And then there's a category we call practitioner employees. So these are your Title IX coordinators, your conduct officers, your investigators, decision-makers, administrative law judges, and any appeals officers. They also have to be trained annually on very specific things. Next slide. And with that, I will turn it over to Paige, who will talk about the estimated costs and enforcement.
Thank you, Danny. As we continue to develop a plan for complying with the new rules, we know that there will be an increase in the work and costs regarding training, as Danny just mentioned. I want to first say that over the last six months, OCI recently took steps to reduce costs for universities by developing our own internal online Title IX training program for all employees. I want to thank UW Madison, who shared their training program with us so that we could develop something for all other universities. And even though the students aren't required to be trained under Title IX specifically, we have always provided training to students on sex discrimination issues under state law. Under these new regs, we'll now need to update our existing training programs as well as develop and implement additional training programs for those additional roles. There will also be an increase in the informational awareness and campus communication campaign on the Title IX training responsibilities so that students and employees understand their training rights and responsibilities as well as reporting processes. Finally, as we currently do with other training programs, we will need to test, implement, and monitor all trainings for quality and functionality. Next slide, please. The new regs will also increase our tracking and enforcement of training requirements, which would include follow-up reminders and initiating enforcement measures when necessary. Just want to note that most employees voluntarily complete. However, there is a small percentage of employees who may either fail or forget to complete the training on time, which then requires additional reminders, follow-ups, and potential consequences for our, from our either HR or Department or Dean of Students offices. Next slide, please. So in summary, as we move forward with our Title IX efforts, there are a few factors that we are keeping in mind to ensure that we're serving and supporting students and employees. First, staffing levels and capacity. A great deal of the Title IX work will continue to be managed at the campus level. The Department of Education expects all universities to have sufficient staff and expertise in place to fulfill the Title IX rights and protections of all parties. A number of Title IX coordinators, as you've heard before, wear multiple hats due to the needs of the campus, and with regulatory changes, their work will increase in this space. Also, with the expansion of the definition of Title IX and the jurisdiction of the university's authority to handle cases now off-campus, this will likely increase the student complaints and reports received, which will increase the caseload for both the Dean of Students offices, Human Resources offices, and Title IX coordinators, as well as investigators and other practitioners in this area. In addition, there will be an increase in reporting obligations and training requirements, as Danny mentioned, for a variety of practitioners in the Title IX area, which will require more work and resources to complete, track, and monitor. These are just a few considerations as we build up the necessary support and capacity under the new Title IX regs. We will be working closely with the UWSA offices to develop a plan over the coming months to determine more specific costs, resources, and staffing levels necessary to ensure that we are fully compliant under Title IX. I want to recognize and thank all of the Title IX coordinators and practitioners on the campuses, and in particular, the Title IX Working Group, Code, and Policy Teams. We recognize that many university employees are involved in this work, and we appreciate all that they've done for students. I'll now turn it over to Quinn Williams, General Counsel, to discuss the scope statement approval and next steps in the process. Quinn?
Thank you, Paige and Danny. UW administration is seeking emergency and permanent rule changes to Chapters UW S 1, 4, 7, 11, and 17 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code to comply with the substantive and procedural requirements provided under the new regulations. As part of the rulemaking process, board approval of the emergency and permanent rule scope statements is required by Section 227.136 of the Wisconsin statutes. UW administration held a preliminary public hearing regarding the emergency and permanent rule scope statements on June 14, 2024. UW administration is required to report on the public comment period, and public hearing is required by Wistat 227.136. UW administration did not receive any written or verbal public comments during the public comment period or public hearing. The Governor approved the scope statements on May 23, 2024, as required by 227.135 Wistats. Assuming board approval of the scope statements, the rulemaking process will follow a general timeline over the next year, as noted in Attachment C in your packet, with the next step being approval of proposed emergency rules on July 8 in front of the Board of Regents. As a result, we ask that the Board adopt Resolution 5, approving the attached emergency and permanent rule Administrative Code scope statements for the revision of Chapters UW S 1, 4, 7, 11, and 17 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we discuss, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 5?
So move, right.
And is there a second?
Second, Salzwedel.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'm going to jump in, and I just, there are hands up, but I just want to say thank you so much to General Counsel Williams, Chief Compliance Officer Paige Smith, and Title Coordinator Danny Thompson, and all of the campuses, because this is such a huge, huge, heavy lift. The Title IX coordinators and everyone on all campuses has really gone above and beyond with so much of what they need to do, and I know this is just the beginning, so I just really want to say thank you. It's a lot of work. So, let's see. Regent Rye?
Sure. Just a question, a two-part question, actually. One is, obviously, it was outlined that we're going to need more resources. It would be great to, at some point, quantify that. Specifically, the resources that could be deployed in a shared manner across all 13 campuses and house that system versus having the stress, number one, on each individual campus to be able to do this. Number two, to provide consistency in compliance across all 13 campuses. It would be great to understand the plan. I know you guys are still working through all of this, so we're not asking for the plan here, but at some point, understanding what, from a lack of better words, a shared service plan is for Title IX. And the second one, completely unrelated, but because this Board has oversight of compliance to make sure that the system and the 13 campuses are compliant with state and federal law, what is the mandatory training for us? I assume that there should be some, or I at least would recommend it, that we have that because a lot of the appeals in certain sectors actually do come up to this Board. So I would like to be more prepared. This is my request.
Excellent question.
Do you mind if I respond?
No, go ahead.
So I'll respond to your first part, and then I'll let Danny respond to the second. So we, we have and we currently do think about the way in which we can provide services at the university, to the universities. It's one of the reasons the Office of Compliance and Integrity was created to ensure, and in fact, the first position that was created within the Office of Compliance, other than the Chief Compliance Officer, was the Title IX Specialist. And that role at that time was significant for the universities to have the support and expertise at a centralized level so that we were providing consistency and guidance and training, and just day in and day out activities and issues that came up. In addition, we also created the investigative model, which now we have two investigators, and they have continued to provide additional investigative services in the Title IX space for universities. So for example, since 2013, or 2020, 23, we've provided over 513 hours of investigative services to universities. So that is one way in which we've continued to build out those services. But we do, we would like to ensure that if we are providing centralized services, that they are consistent with the needs of the universities, which, as you know, can at times be different, depending on their level of expertise and staffing. So.
So that is one thing that we have continued to do. We'll continue to look at those options, but I appreciate that we want to look for more. So Danny, the training for the board, can you mention that?
I don't know if this is good news or bad news, but as appeal officers, all chancellors in the Board of Regents will need to have annual training. We're still working out the details of what that looks like. We don't, I think, expect you to have the eight to twenty-hour training that the rest of the practitioners have. Yes, that's what it boils down to. But there is some training and I think that that is under the federal requirements. They very specifically lay out that any appeals officers have to be trained annually specifically on what their duties are.
Okay. Thanks. I personally think it's a good thing. So thank you very much. We have a few hands up, Regent Cruiser, then Regent Walsh and then Regent Salzweedle. So go ahead, Regent.
Thank you. Thank you, Danny and Paige, for a quite informative presentation today. I just have a concur with Regent Rye on his track of thinking of what some of these costs are going to be. And I just jotted these down and we could just maybe put this into the mix for maybe report back. Was, is there an increased cost? And what are those increased costs by campus? Obviously, some of the lesser, smaller campuses are going to have an increased cost. And we just would like to know kind of where that's tracking and personnel and material. If somebody was hired, now that it's a more robust role, is management going to be able to evaluate who's there and be able to determine maybe they need to upgrade? Are they going to have that flexibility or are they not going to? I don't know where we stand on employee relations there, but clearly, this is a more robust role and maybe they need a better fit to make this occur and be managed. What is the overall cost in IT and staff per campus? Or basically, what are the costs incurred by these new requirements that I'm not disagreeing with at all? And is there a, again, a uniformed way to keep track of who's in and who's out of which campus? I think I've already said that. And who's working as a unified team and who's going independent? And then what do we as regions do in a situation like that when we really clearly want everybody to be working together in one system? I think that's another policy question we want to look at. And I think that's, and then where are all the resources coming from to implement this? Which I believe the answer is, but I don't know, is internally from each of the campuses. So there's just some things going on that I think we'd like to be more granular, with more granular detail, understand how this is affecting each campus when we're asking them to do other things also. This is just another area that is going to cause more resource allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody want to comment from your team or?
Yes, and just briefly, again, I want to be sensitive to time. But I would say, you know, in general, to the question, the costs are going to, as usual, are in staff. Staffing costs. You're going to need more support. You're going to need, you know, the workload is going to increase, which means that if the campus currently has a Title IX coordinator wearing multiple hats, they may need to rethink the way in which they're, you know, providing that type of role on their campus. I think what we do really well is we have a Title IX policy, both the board policy as well as a system policy that outlines Title IX protections and rights, which again is part of the scope statement work. But that policy is generally consistent across all campuses. They use the same types of standards, procedures, as well as our codes, which, you know, lay out the standards for any types of student protections and rights under the disciplinary code. So there is consistency in the policy work. There's also consistency in the coordination work. So Danny works, I don't know, if not weekly, if not daily, with Title IX coordinators across the universities to ensure that we're providing consistent support and guidance under Title IX. So I do think we have a really strong system. I think with the capacity, we're going to have to think about whether we create capacity at the central level and if so, is it in fact specific to the needs of the campuses? Because a lot of this work, as I mentioned, is going to have to still be managed at the campus level. So I appreciate the comments and we're definitely taking good notes and we'll continue to monitor those.
Thank you. Regent Walsh?
Thank you, Regent President Bogus. I echo Regent Cruiser and Regent Rye over concern for the cost of this. I'm not making a value judgment here on that suggests that we can pick and choose cafeteria style, which of these things we're going to devote our energy to. But when I hear you say more record keeping, more training, more monitoring, doling out of potential consequences for people that don't get training. Quinn, you and I last week discussed the fact that I don't think this board has a good idea of who's at each campus and what's supporting the effort there now and what do they feel they need to do in order to be able to make these changes that the law requests that we do. I really hope you're going to give us that. Right now, we're three miles up on a drone here as a board, but I don't have a sense on campuses, but I've talked to enough student services people that I am concerned that we're going to start to lose these people that essentially have two or three jobs folded into what used to be one. So I would like to see, and it doesn't have to be a long report, but just for each campus, what do they have now and what do they feel they're going to need? And, you know, then we can say, wow, here it is across thirteen campuses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Regent Walsh, and we will definitely be working with the campuses to create that information for you.
Thank you. Regent Salzweedle, you had your hand up. Is that no longer the case?
Mostly covered around the structure of this and sometimes the costs can be mitigated a little bit with a relook at structure and I'm sure you guys are doing that. I guess I had a new Regent question, which is on the two-year campuses or the satellite campuses. How are those coordinators or practitioners? Do they fold into the one of the thirteen or do they have separate resources there as well?
They are covered by the Title IX coordinator at the main campus, so they also work with the satellite campuses too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Regent Peterson? Oh, I think you're muted. I'm sorry.
I said, "Thank you, Regent President Bogus."
Thank you, Regent Peterson.
Forty years ago, my mother was involved in government and one of the things that drove her absolutely insane was unfunded mandates. And this is what this is. This is an unfunded government mandate. And I just wondered if you could help me understand, either Paige or Danny, the background, the context for how this developed into a fifteen-hundred-page thing from a thirty-seven-word statement? Just not, you know, like a two-minute, how did this happen? Sorry, I just have to know.
No, that's fine. You know, the original nineteen seventy-two statement was kind of apparently slipped in at the last minute into the Amendment, the Education Amendments Act. And they didn't realize how big that was going to be. And so then Department of Education had to get together, I think, mid to late seventies to figure out, like, actually, how does this work? Started off as a smaller document, mainly focused on sports and particular colleges that didn't allow women especially, so medical colleges, law colleges, things like that. And then I believe in two thousand, you know, it kind of like just went along as it was. And then in two thousand, the Supreme Court ruled that sexual assault and sexual violence did fall under Title IX as sex-based crimes and that universities were at that point required to address it. And to be frank, they didn't do a very good job for a very long time. And then in two thousand and eleven, the Obama administration put out a Dear Colleague letter and said, "You need to get your act together," and that really kicked everything into gear. And from that point, then the Department of Education started doing more and more, okay, this is what you need to do, as they realized that it was not consistent throughout the United States, how different universities were handling this. Some were not handling it all, some were handling it pretty well, others were sweeping things under the rug. And this is really a response to that, to make sure that we are addressing the needs of our students and that we're supporting students when these things happen on our campuses and not pretending that they don't.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Regent Walsh, did you have a question?
Again, I had a question about, you used the term potential consequences in talking about if we don't have all of our people training. My guess is, in a system this large with as many employees and students that we have, it's going to be a heavy lift to make sure everybody gets trained. So I'd like you to tell me what these potential consequences are. Do they fall to the employee? Do they fall to the campus? And also, if a campus isn't performing this record keeping and training and all the other things that we're now expecting them to do, what are the consequences to the campuses for not being able to fulfill those obligations?
So I'll just mention consequences. So say that an employee specifically fails to complete the training on time. Consequences would be handled through the Human Resources Office for purposes of likely withholding pay plan?
Is that one of the? Are you talking about the system office or are you talking about campus?
Campuses. So those be, but we could also do the same for UWSA employees, so we're all required to take it. The consequences for the universities, Title IX violations would fall within the university's obligation. So of course, the board being the governing board. But most likely, if we are, if the Department of Education came in and did a review or if a complaint was filed with the Office for Civil Rights, then we would need to provide documentation showing that we have completed the training as required. If we had not, and if it's deemed to be a violation of Title IX, then that process goes through the litigation process. It can also impact our Title IV funding because the law does tie it to our federal funds.
So are you think that there will be random evaluation of these policies? Or is there a regular report we're required to give showing how we're meeting these obligations?
I don't recall any type of specific report that we file with the Department of Education on a regular basis. Usually, it comes through, as I mentioned, an Office for Civil Rights complaint that a student or employee may file claiming that either, you know, we violated one of the rights or a violation of some provision under Title IX. And then the Office for Civil Rights would come in and do a review and do an investigation of our practices. Otherwise, I think we have always, you know, done an excellent job of tracking and monitoring to assure compliance. So it's one of the reasons that each campus does have a compliance office, an officer on hand, as well as our office to help them track compliance with this. And keep in mind, as Danny mentioned, we have been doing this and we have been training all of our employees for years, but every three years. So that's why, it's not that we haven't been training. We're just going to have to train to a more intense level and more often and also increase the training for more specific employees as well. And those trainings are, I think, easier to manage because you actually have a list of specific employees who are now defined under those roles. But it is a risk. It's always a risk, just like other Title IV practices as well. But ultimately, like I said, we've been very successful in ensuring that we have not had any violations of Title IX.
Thank you. Thank you. Regent Tyler?
I'll apologize for my comment in advance, but I just seems, I have a lot of frustration with, as Chris said, the unfunded mandate. Just penciling out what it looks like the training costs. Just the staff time and attending training looks like it's going to be over ten million dollars and that doesn't include, you know, the preparation and the loss of productivity and other things. You know, I think this could easily be, you know, well into the tens of millions and to have something like that unfunded when, you know, your head is struggling already just seems, you know, completely unfair. But anyway, I just want to exhibit my frustration with the mandate and not funding the mandate.
Thank you. And I want to point out that, you know, our system and Danny Thompson, it's amazing that they're developing, the system is developing our own training and I think, you know, it's saving some money. So just wanted to point that out. And I think we have Regent Nixon.
Thank you, President Bogus. Now, I had the same reaction to it. More bureaucracy, more whatever. But I asked Ms. Smith and Ms. Thompson a specific question yesterday when we were talking. What are we doing for the students involved? Forget Title IX, forget everything else. Are we doing the right things for the students, plaintiffs and respondents involved? And I got a very nice explanation, yes, which I would ask you, but at some point, I think that would be appropriate to explain to the board what happens on the ground, the things you are doing to support the people. I told them at the end of the day, I don't care what the rules are, I want the right thing done, whether it's mandated or not. It has to be a place where our students can learn. That is the primary function of what we're here for and enabling to do that. I was pleased, but yes, I had the same reaction on the bureaucracy because I don't know how adding all of this. And that was really my question to them. How does adding all this stuff actually help the people involved in the situations get through this? They had a nice explanation, so at some point, maybe in the future, they can talk about that in more detail. It's a little in-depth for today.
Thank you. Appreciate all your comments. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I think, just want to make sure, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of Resolution Five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and that concludes our business for today. Appreciate all your time and we are adjourned. Thank you.